All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call our 4:00 P. M. Work session of the A S D. School Board to order. Today is Tuesday, September 19th. It is 4:00 P. M. Here in the boardroom. We have our agenda. We've called ourselves to order. The first item on our agenda is Board Request for Information. My understanding is we don't have any uncategorized requests. Is that correct, Ms. Foster? Okay, so we have no requests. Are there any board members who wish to add a item to our R F I line? Hearing none. Now seems like a great time to acknowledge the members in the room as Member Holloman and Higgins have just joined us. We also have Member Lessons, Wilson, and myself, Member Jacobs, and no one online, correct, Ms. Foster?
I am.
Resident Bellamy is online. Perfect. We have a full complement of board members. And we've moved on from our request for information. The next item is C Discussion. C I P is the sole item for discussion. Dr. Bryant, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So today's topic of discussion will be on school capacity as it relates to the C I P. So as I shared, one of the goals of a potential A S D. School consolidation plan would be to increase the number of students within a given school building. So we spent a number of months last year discussing how, we spent a number of months discussing the potential academic benefits of schools with greater capacity. And I do believe to achieve our board goals, we need to really have critical conversations about the benefits of higher capacity schools with more students that we'll discuss today, but include, you know, lowering the number of combination classrooms, increasing academic support services. So even though this discussion is rooted on operations in the C I P., the really in the bigger picture, the purpose is to think about the academic impact of school consolidations. So with that, I'll kick it off to the team.
Thank you. I'm Jim Anderson, the C O O. So in previous briefings, we covered the annual calendar cycle of all things capital plans. We talked about how we prioritize projects. We talked about how we categorize needs. We went through building lifecycle and all the major components that have different life expectancies. We looked at how we look at multiple different buildings and projects and try to prioritize by looking at cost savings and opportunity cost analysis. When, for example, if you take a roof off, you can go ahead and do all these other things. So it's much cheaper to do that school over another one at times. We also did a deep dive on facility condition index, education adequacy, the E A C. And we also talked about all the steps in master planning. So today's briefing is going to focus on school capacity. Things we'll cover, why do we track it, how we do it and figure it out, what we do with the information that we use, that we have in order to develop long range plans and try to prioritize effectively. So on the next slide, if you go to why we look at school capacity, when you look at long term planning, you really do need to look six years out on school capacity. And it is a projection, right? Because anything could happen. The Willow Project could draw another thousand people to Anchorage if and when it actually starts working. We know they're going to hire two to three thousand people. When ConocoPhillips pulled out and no one was expecting that, we lost a lot of people. The pandemic. So there's a lot of things, but we do try to look six years out, one to meet the six year C I P., but also so we can make decisions that we know we're not going to regret two or three years from now as to whether it should have been a priority. So as you move down towards capacity analysis, we did talk about the E A I. And the F C I. Pretty much in depth during the last briefing. So I wanted to give a couple of examples. So when Capital Plans is looking at the facility condition index, it really does stand out to us why you would really start looking at one school over another. And I'll just give a couple of examples. Abbott Loop, we knew, all of us knew that it was in pretty bad shape. And just last year's deferred maintenance alone compared to any other elementary school was thirteen point three million. When you looked at Eagle River Elementary School, which recently went through renovation after the earthquake, its total deferred maintenance was eight hundred and seventeen thousand. So it really does stand out when they're looking at spreadsheets with ninety plus schools where you need to focus in. And they really can look at how that facility condition index and how that deferred maintenance is going to grow over the next five years to look at what schools we should be focusing on five years from now. So that's just a quick example. Then as you look a little bit further in those bullets, you'll see the facility cost per pupil. So for the last several years, we have been looking at how much a facility costs per pupil. And I just wanted to pick out two schools to give an example, just using state and local funding. If you look at, and these are not picked based off who I think might close or consolidate, just two good examples of a small elementary school and a large one. So if you look at Birchwood, that had a hundred and ninety-four students last year, state and local combined, and that includes transportation, with Birchwood requiring more transportation than Bay Shore because it's mostly a walking school. It included nutrition and everything else. Birchwood was sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars per student to operate, whereas Bay Shore's at more than double the number of students was seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four, so less than half. If you take out all those things to try to make apple to apple comparisons, you take out transportation, special ed, grant funding, title, every other type of funding, and you just do operational state and local, Bay Shore still was thirty plus percent cheaper when you look at cost per student to operate. Bay Shore, when you make everything apple to apple comparison, was six hundred, three hundred and twenty-three, six thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars per student, whereas Birchwood, even taking all the other stuff out, was still nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. So when you look globally, you look at the district writ large, at how much it costs to operate, and you start talking about school consolidations, it's not as clean as looking at one Abbott Loop and saying, this is how much we could save over five years. It's looking at those long term capital savings that we could, instead of spending it on that building, apply it towards improving the educational facilities in the buildings that we're quite confident would remain. And I think that Birchwood and Bay Shore is a good example. More than twice the size, take everything out but just operational funding, and it costs a third less to operate per student. So it is significant. If you go down to the long term goals, one of them that popped out last year, and I think all of us took note, was boundaries. And you'll see as we do the sixth grade to middle school, that really if you're looking at equitable education opportunities, and we know there's other things, transportation and other things that can make stuff more equitable, but boundaries alone, if you move the Diamond Estate students from Golden View and South to Mirs and Diamond, you cut their transit time in half. And so, you know, it was great, actually, that the community did get involved, that they were active, and they made sure we were looking at this group of students. And so you'll see that certainly is not just part of our long term goal, but the first day of school next year, we expect the current Golden View students to be going to Mirs, and the current South students to be going to Diamond High, both of which are less than half the distance. So if you go to the next slide, just to carry on the trend, the one thing that really does rise above every other priority because we're a school district is our board goals. Our board goals are not about buses. They're not about the number of computers. They're not about anything else but the level of service we can provide to our students education wise. And if you look at what we see in a very small elementary school versus a large elementary school, there's a number of high need, low density people, everything from O T P T psychologists, art health, P E, all of those things where you're spreading these assets so thin across a number of schools where a larger school like Bay Shore would have all of them there five days a week. So you do, one, you concentrate the resources in the larger schools. And in every small school, you have people who, at times, are doing class in a cart as they move their stuff with them bouncing around schools. And I know that there are also advantages to small schools, and we've all heard that the community loves them. But there are disadvantages when it comes to, are we providing the same level of education experience to a student in a one section school versus a student in a three section school? And the real answer is no. And some of us see this every day. So a one section school means one kindergarten, one first grade, one second grade, one third grade. And a three section would be three first grade classes. So if you look underneath the elementary school challenges, the number of small, the number of combo classes in really small schools is significantly higher. Also, these class sized bubbles that pop out in a one section school are incredibly difficult to fix. And so you will, and we do every year, hear people come in and say, you're telling me you have a class, a P T R. Of X, but my kid's in a class size of thirty-one. When you have more than one section, those class sizes start normalizing out using the P T R. Formula. And last year, when Shannon was talking, and I can't remember, I think it was Eric, I could be wrong, they talked about how we could physically see that a three section school levels out and normalizes, and you don't see, you just don't see the same bubbles that you see in a really small one section school. And then, of course, you have the fact that if one of three third grade teachers is out, the substitute has two other third grade teachers to ask questions and get some mentoring and help and assistance. So those are the things as we look at how it affects the level of service of education in a small school, that they're real. And we've seen, we saw it within the first two weeks of school this year with these class sized bubbles that there was no clean, easy way to fix. And not exclusively, but almost exclusively, they were in one section or one point five section schools versus something like Bay Shore with a three section. Then you start looking at secondary, and it really is the schedule. There's so many periods per day. There's only so many course offerings per period based off the number of teachers you have. So the options, the choices, the ability for a student to flex their schedule and get what really excites them out of life is much smaller in a small secondary school. And then you also have those issues with bubbles at grade levels, but it's certainly much different. So at the bottom, I tried to summarize this with, it is about the math, and it is about the data, and it is about the dollars, and it is about all the other things. But at the end of the day, it's about the education level of service spread across the district. So all students have a chance to succeed and improve their outcomes. And that, that got lost last year in the town halls. It got lost in many of the briefings. And, you know, that was a good lesson learned. And as you go to the next slide, obviously, we do learn lessons. That's what we do. So I talked about how we're going to have public surveys and from starting next month all the way through January, and then community listening sessions from February through April to try to figure out what does the community, how would they want us to look at schools if we're looking at consolidating or and or closure and or repurposing? What are the community priorities? So in May, when the board agrees that these are the metrics that we want the administration to use, when you come back in the fall, we will have done an analysis, and we will have recommendations for a multi year plan to right size the district focusing on maximizing the education level of service we can provide with the funds that we have. So the surveys and town halls, unlike last time, I think all of us probably learned quite a few lessons. But the one piece that I personally failed to make a priority was to make those, those listening sessions and surveys to be informative and describe the environment that leads to the question and why that question is relevant. So people who don't do this for a living all day, every day can understand better how to even answer the question. And I think it'll make the data and the analysis more valid. And I think it'll give the board a much stronger base of understanding from the community members for you to agree on the rubric that we'll be using next summer. And, you know, we're talking about this now. It's not part of the budget cycle. It's separate from the budget cycle. But obviously, the surveys and the community listening sessions, they're all stacked on top, just like sixth grade to middle school, just like all those other things. We're a big district with a lot of change. It will be stacked on top, but it's not about the amount of money we would save in one year or two years or three years. It's those long term strategic savings of long term capital investments, and it's a focus on education level of service. So that's why we're talking about school capacity. And I will hand off to Larry and Dana, who are the experts on deed and A S D. And the differences between how those capacities are determined. And a lot of that really is, remember, Donnelly's been asking for, I don't know, three, five, I don't know how many years, not that you've been here like that many years, but he's been asking, and I thought it was relevant to everybody to try to explain that. So everybody walks away from here saying, you know, hopefully, I think the way A S D. Is doing it is the right way, and that frankly, we ought to be getting with deed to look at it at sharing the way that we do capacity. So Larry?
Okay. I'm going to talk to you about the deed capacity and how that's calculated, which I know a little bit about. The state actually has a very simple system. The number of students lets you know how big of a school you're allowed to build. And conversely, the size of your building going through the process tells you what your capacity is. As you can see underneath there on deed, there's the hundred and fourteen per student in elementary plus a supplementary space, which supplementary space is for when the schools are smaller, you need some extra space for common areas that the hundred and fourteen wouldn't cover. So as you go down here, but what the state doesn't say is how you have to use that space. The difference between Anchorage's five hundred student elementary is going to be have different needs than Pelican, which has sixteen students, or AccuCheck in Upstate with two hundred students. What the needs are is left to the actual district itself, how you use that space. But it does tell you what the total capacity is. And next, Dana will talk about the A S D.
Hi, I'm Dana. So A S D. A few years ago, we took a good hard look at how we were calculating capacity. And originally, it was done by sending out utilization surveys to our principals and having them tell us how many classrooms and what they were using them for. And every year when we would get it back, it'd be a varying from one year to the next, depending on how that principal counted their classrooms and what they were using the spaces for. So we, the board, through the board direction, we took a good hard look at how we wanted to calculate program capacity. So A S D. Takes into consideration the number of classrooms or teaching stations, the programs within a building, and also the P T R. That's the majority of the, of the calculation. The other is the programs. So we have a lot of programs that have reduced capacity, and that will be more on the next slide. We'll get into more specifics on each individual grouping. But the other thing that we took a look at was, we don't calculate areas like corridors, restrooms, mechanical spaces and office areas. So those do not add to the capacity calculation. That does get added into the calculation from deed. And elementary and secondary spaces are calculated a little differently as well. In elementary schools, M P Rs, gyms, and libraries are also not counted towards the capacity as examples. In secondaries, the cafeterias and libraries are not counted, but gyms are because you can have a gym class with a teacher there all the time because students aren't getting pulled out of their classes to attend gym. Gym is their class. So if we want to go to the next slide, so this one's individual elementary schools on, well, it depends on which way you look at it. We'll go for the left, and then secondary is on the right. So I'm going to work on elementary schools first. So the biggest block is the light blue, and that's your general ed classroom. And then the next, the orange, is your general preschool, which is sixteen students. And your general education has twenty-five students. Then you look around the pie, and you see different size cutouts. And those are just based on the number of students that are in those programs. So each school can have different programs. Like if we look at Tyson, they have the S B B S. Program. And so the S B B S. Program has eight students versus the twenty-five. So we're, those classroom spaces are calculated at those student ratios versus a full classroom set. Does anybody have any questions on elementary school? All right, I'll move to secondary. And secondary is very similar. The ratios are just a little bigger. The typical classroom for secondary, we picked ninth grade as our example, is thirty-one students. And then Life Skills One has fifteen students. So same sized classroom could have fifteen students instead of the thirty-one students that are, is our P T R. This allows the district to change and adapt its capacity to reflect the programs that we offer in our buildings. And that's why we went to a program capacity for calculating how much space is in our buildings for students. So if there are any questions, I'll kick this back over to Larry.
Hello. If you go to the next one there, yeah. I thought I'd grab a couple of schools, some elementary, some middle, and some high schools, and kind of give you a comparison of what they are for a deed capacity and one A S D. Capacity. And they kind of span a little bit. Wonder Park, actually, A S D. Says we have more capacity than deed does. Conversely, Airport Heights is just the opposite on there. And then we got Ravenwood. I mean, a difference of ten for that number of classrooms is really nothing as far as the difference goes. And if you go take a look down there, there are differences. Some are big, some are small. But I just wanted to check in and see what the difference is and put it together. Next one. Here we go, looking at both the elementary and the secondary based on overall capacity of our attendance area, the Anchorage attendance area, and look at overtime and our projections that we received last year. On the blue would be how many students we're going to have with the orange each color on top is the excess capacity. In other words, how much buildings we have that are not needed. So if you look at that, and then there's a blue line, which is deed's capacity, what they show. And as you can see, as we know, the population is dropping, and this goes down further, and this is through the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. Next. Here we get into if we, it was the board's decision to get to ninety percent capacity, this is what we'd be looking at both in the A S D. As well as in the deed for elementaries and the number of square feet we would have to reduce, as well as kind of what a typical school, how many schools we would be looking at. Now, both of these, this sheet and the prior sheet does not have anything in there for moving the sixth graders next year because our, none of our projections actually had that in there. So we're still working off of last year's projections until we get a new one. So if you look at this, I kind of show you for elementaries, there's a bit of a difference there, and as well as the secondary schools.
Kathy, could you go back to slide five? So on slide five in the lower left hand corner, just to clarify that last chart where it showed to get to ninety percent capacity, it would be X. Number of schools. That really is just a cursory capacity only. In the lower left hand corner, there's, there's other things that make a huge difference. The transportation analysis, it might not be possible to close certain schools because of the cost of the buses and the length of time it would take to get to the new schools might rule those schools out, even though other factors might, might put them for a while during the analysis up near the top of the list. The things we get from the community, their thoughts on everything from immersion programs, special programs, are they exempt, should they be exempt? You know, it will go back to when we start looking at can we consolidate schools? The unfortunate truth is that in the original design of Anchorage, when they were laying out streets that really did crisscross form squares and rectangles and everything, they built smaller homes in a more condensed areas and walking schools. And that's the way Anchorage was laid out. The vast majority of those schools do happen to be, not by design, but probably by age and other influencers, a lot of them are Title One schools. Whereas you look at the schools built recently, they're more spread out, they're farther apart, there's a larger space in between schools, and you just don't see this tight grouping of four or five schools where maybe you can make that three or four schools. So it's going to be, it's going to be, nothing's off the, nothing's off the list. As you look at, you know, what can we do to provide the best educational experience? Part of it might be when you've lost over five thousand students, that we need to find some efficiencies in terms of how we can educate and provide services. And that means combining and consolidating schools. So, but regardless of the metrics, one of the realities is the older schools are generally title, and there are more schools closer together than farther apart. So I'll try to explain that again, as we're going through surveys and listening sessions, it, I think we really do have to do, we have to put a large amount of effort into explaining the environment that we're operating in, explaining what does it mean when we're trying to improve the level of service, and then ask questions. And we were, it was too rushed last year. And it was, I think this time, though, we're going to have six months of surveys and listening sessions and board feedback before we go into it. And next year will be more personable, and hopefully more informative. There will still be people who say, any school but my school, but I do support it, just not my school. And that will be a reality. So we'll try to figure out how in the surveys we can determine what schools the people are associated with. So when we're collecting data, we can normalize that data to be able to get a better feel for how the community responds. And, and really, we're providing transparency by taking six months, I think, to put this out there and to collect feedback and share the results of the feedback. So there should not be any surprises. I think that was Jarrett's number one guidance was, was there can't be a surprise to anybody that we're talking about it, thinking about it, and that we intend to come back to the board. And I think, you know, barring board guidance and a different direction or some other things that you'd like, I think we have, I think we have a path that works. So in the next, Kathy, you can go to the last slide. We still have more deep dives. And I know some people are wondering why. But, but we did promise that we wanted to walk the board through all these different processes because they are complicated to understand. And unless you're, unless you do this for a living, but you're the ones who have to explain this to people, the community. um, and, but you're the ones who have to explain this to people at community council meetings and everything else. So I really felt an obligation to try, try to provide, um, these classes this year. So you will see a procurement process, deep dive, um, where Dave will be up here and, and Dana and Rachel and others as, as we talk about not just the, the procurement piece, but how do you get to the procurement piece with funding? We'll go through all the grants that we've applied for, the success rates of different grants and the types of projects that we look at for grant funding versus, um, bonding versus one-time money. Um, and, and try to get a feel from the board as to whether you think, um, that needs to be tweaked or, 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 uh, you know, you're, you're pretty comfortable that we really don't have a dartboard where we throw darts, then we turn around and we see where they landed. Picking the schools on a CIP list, it, it's a lot of work and it's hundreds of hours to get to what looks like a simple spreadsheet that we will be giving you in the next month, um, in October. And, uh, so I, I, I was hopeful that these sessions will, will build a little bit of confidence in the, in the methodology and the process. So the other deep dives, and, and we will do this as long as you can tolerate it, um, and as long as you want it, are, are any topics you want to understand better. Um, we can talk through city codes, we can talk through, I can't personally, but everybody to my left can talk about it. Um, and, and it's, if, these really are for you. This is for the board to help you prepare to go to community council meetings. It's not for the administration to, to talk at you. Um, so with that, I, we're, we're certainly open to questions. I have very smart people with me. Um, so yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and team. Um, just want to know for the record, member Donley joins us back at 402. Um, I see President Bellamy has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and Jim, thank you, thank you and team for the, the information. Uh, I had just a couple of, uh, questions regarding, um, you know, the level of service is what, what really means. Prior to talking about cost savings, I think our, I, I really think, uh, level of service, really clarifying what that means. Uh, perhaps even starting with that, uh, beyond, before even talking about cost and budget. Cause I think that, so I'm glad to see that this, that, 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 you know, the, the, the level of educational service uh, and efficiency is, is there. Um, and so I, 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 I do like that. My, the only other comment or question that I have is, do you think it would be beneficial to add repurposing? Because really, there are three options. There's closure, consolidation, and repurposing. Or do you think that might be too much, um, too confusing?
No, ma'am, I, I agree completely on, on slide three. I, I didn't read the slide, um, but if you look under long-term planning, the, the fourth, fifth bullet down, um, I do look at, we are looking at all of us building new schools when, when that's the right thing to do, um, to get the level of service that we need, consolidating, closing and demoing, um, and repurposing. So e- everything's going to be on the table. Um, and it's, it's really a, a smorgasbord of options as, as we look at, um, how we can provide a better level of education experience.
Okay. Cause I really think that's, that is the ticket right there. The level, because people do not, they don't, they don't care what it costs, really. I mean, they are, they do, I won't say they don't care. But when we are talking about, uh, changing what they are used to, and we equate it to the ma- amount of money sir, you know, that it costs, there is just no, there's no comparison. I mean, they, they just, that's incomprehensible. But when you, when you look at it through the lens of, you know, um, improving the level of service, not just for their kid, but for all kids. I, I just think that's more impactful. So I'm glad to see that in this round. And thanks for explaining what that community process is going to look like. Cause I think, um, that the, the public process, how that's going to look like with the town halls, the listening sessions. Um, and, and as a board member, I do appreciate having the, um, information so that we can, because we're already getting questions. Uh, I, at least I am already getting questions at community councils regarding the next steps on what's going to be happening, especially with the six, with the middle, the sixth grade to middle. Will boundaries change? Will, you know, how, you know, how are we going to, um, you know, how, how is that going to happen? When is it going to happen? So, uh, the timeline is wonderful. So I thank you.
Um, question from member Holman, then we'll go to member Liston.
Um, in the, in last year's round, when I looked at the recommendations that you, as a team brought forward, one of the things that struck me is it seemed like the choices were very much about um, neatly moving groups of students, like not dispersing students into five different schools, but into one or two different schools. And I, I appreciate that as a top priority that, um, to me, it looked like we're really looking at the impact on individual kids when they, when they move and trying to be, trying to do the least harm, or in some cases, maybe actually do some benefit depending, uh, but certainly everybody would debate that. It's a difficult thing to talk to the public about unless you can also talk about why certain other schools are much more complicated to break up. Um, and, and I did some, but I was always guessing a little bit because, and, and I'm not sure how you can do it because as difficult as it is to talk about closing six schools, that means you have to talk about why you want to keep 57 of them open. Um, and that's, that's, you quickly get into a, a big mess. But I, I do think it's important to emphasize that, that, that we've looked for situations where we could move students the least distant, where we could keep neighborhoods intact rather than splitting them between several schools that were further away. But it may also help, um, I think to point out some of the schools where there is no clean way to do that. And, and of course, unfortunately, those are often our schools in more spread out communities, um, which tend to be the more upscale communities. And there's a lot of focus by people that, gosh, we're just focusing on lower income neighborhoods when we do this. Um, I, I don't, I never thought that was a factor in terms of the choice, except that it came about because of the things you mentioned. Those are more compact dense neighborhoods. Um, and, and sometimes it made sense. So in, in giving us our talking points, um, the ability to talk about why a number of schools are really difficult to break up would be helpful as well.
Yeah.
I did feel and still feel that the, the choices that you folks made were very well considered. Um, I, I felt like I could look through it and see why those made the most sense, uh, and did the least damage, uh, even though obviously to the people directly affected, it's, it's a huge thing. You can't, you can't erase that. Thank you.
Member Liston.
I guess I, excuse me, I wanted to begin by, uh, extending a note of appreciation for the explanation between deed capacity and ASD capacity. For some time I've been aware of the deed capacity, which better or worse reminds me of chickens, right? You get X number of square feet per cage, and that just doesn't seem right when uh, our children have all of these other requirements for all of the other, um, parts of a well-rounded education that need physical space. Um, so I appreciate that. One of the things that I would ask the administration to consider is that in the surveys, and this was a response from sort of last year's process, if there's a way to disaggregate input by zip code, so we know that all of the input is not coming from one area of town or the other, I think it would be helpful to understand what, um, what community members, I mean, we have what, three dozen community councils, right? So you can slice and dice Anchorage as tiny as you want. Um, it just, it might be useful to better understand how different neighborhoods or community, you know, sort of smaller communities are responding, um, to the questions that they're asked. Um, and then, um, I guess I just, I wanted to just suggest that the level of service that we're able to provide is also, of course, as we all know, um, influenced and shaped by the, by, by the austerity that we're facing, right? This year's level of service has already been compromised by our budget shortfall. We've lost more than five dozen teachers, uh, from, from last year, just in our PTR allotment. And so, um, I feel like that's just something to say that we want to continue to, um, support the best level of service possible. But as, uh, the coppers get, uh, smaller and smaller, um, there's really only so much we can do to provide a level of service. One of the things that I've been doing is I've been visiting schools and I shared this at a retreat on Saturday. Um, it's just imagining 20% more bodies in a classroom. And so all of a sudden, a 31-class high school becomes significantly larger. Um, so that's, that's how I'm viewing these spaces right now. What happens with 20% more bodies?
Thank you, member Liston. Member Higgins, question from you.
Thank you. I, I, first of all, I'll start with, I, and agree with President Bellamy in regards to the presentation belt, like felt like it was a for-profit entity and initially talking about what you can save and not mentioning kids at all. And, and that, that's a concern to me because we should be focused on how is it going to affect, you know, academics. Um, I would also say that I heard that you're concerned that the public didn't hear you, they would buy into it otherwise. The question is, did we hear what the public said to us during those meetings? And that should have been an acknowledgement too, as to what their concerns are, so that we're recognizing their, their legitimate concerns. There's always two sides to every issue, and all I heard tonight was one side. And what I would hope to do for a discussion is to have the advantages and disadvantages. I heard parents out there talking in a low-income Title I school, everybody in that area, you know, close by, they're participating in their school, they close it, they're not going to be able to participate. There are reasons out there, even if it's legitimate, we need to go in one direction to at least acknowledge it. And I don't think I heard that, and that's a concern. And the last one is this capacity. If right now, uh, we, we've got a lot of vacant classrooms. What if we had Picas Odom and we had to do that? If we got the funding that 36 states in the lower 48 had to lower classroom sizes, how is that going to affect our classroom capacity? And how are we going to be able to manage? At least acknowledge it that that's a, that is a real risk issue in regards to it. We go from 25 kids to one to 15, that's going to be a lot of classrooms, okay? If, if we may decide to go in that direction, but let's at least acknowledge it. Because that's something that, you know, we, we play with the issue, do we force the state to do it? It's not adequate funding, but at least acknowledge it in here of what the capacity would be. And, and I would hope that, that everything we focus on here is besides the listening rather than just being heard, but there is always two sides to every issue. And there were pros and cons to closing it. The cons may, the, the pros may weigh out for dollar reasons or for some other reasons. But if dollars wasn't the issue, if we had the capacity for additional teachers or do other things, I'm not sure what the best answer would be. And I do agree also with, with President Bellamy. We got a, the fact that we're using Abbott Loop right now for the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, to me is great. Because that, those were kids that, and, and our charter schools right now are not in safe buildings, not, not in case of an earthquake, not like our schools are, and they're our kids. And safety becomes a big issue. So if we're looking at it and we're going to do that, then we have to talk about whether or not you take over the whole school or is there a way for us to combine more the schools and still get the benefits within neighborhood, increase the capacity, do other things. I don't know what the benefits will be, how we might be able to do it. But I, I really want all the options on the table, and I do want to recognize it's not, there is pros and cons to this issue. And we ought to recognize all the variables in here. We have to listen to the public because they have given us a lot of feedback. I didn't agree with all of it either. But I do recognize it, and I do think we need to acknowledge it when we give a presentation to the public. Thank you.
I'll jump in. Uh, thank you, member Higgins. Um, so a question on, I think it's slide nine with the bar graphs on our enrollment versus, um, the deed calculation. Could staff explain the delta, why the delta is larger at the elementary level than the secondary level? I was staring at the, um, the different items that we exclude, and I'm seeing maybe like gymnasiums aren't, um, aren't excluded in the secondary level. Was that why, or is there something else I'm missing on that?
Sure. The, the bulk of our schools that were under 65% capacity were elementary schools. So that is the largest when, um, when we talked about birth rate data over the last five plus years, elementary schools was hit by the declining birth rate much more than secondary schools because those kids were already in the system. So what we saw was with declining birth rate, every year kindergarten was getting smaller, which meant the next year's first grade was smaller than the year prior's first grade. But ninth through 12th grade wasn't impacted by declining birth rates at that point and wouldn't be for quite a few years.
Thank you. And a, a follow-up question to something, Mr. Anderson, you mentioned earlier. Um, you indicated that, and I think I agree with that our method for calculating capacity is certainly more insightful than the one currently used by the department. Is that something that is changed by the State Board of Education? Is that a commissioner call or is that a statute or regulation?
It's in the board.
Uh, it's in regulation.
I, I think if it were to change though, the, the reality in our state is that it's like apples to kiwi fruit when you're looking at a really small school with 12 people, when none of the things that we use as rubrics to look at the multiple different programs and everything else are even applicable. It really would be those larger districts with larger schools that might look at it differently, whereas a really small school, which could and is in many cases a village's community center, um, they, they just, it's like picking class size, like Picas Oden. It wouldn't do any good to pick a class size of first graders at a small school of 20, 20 kids. You may very well have two teachers with 10 kids each, uh, across multiple grade levels. So e- even when you look at Picas Oden, it's not necessarily applicable to every district in the state. It, it certainly is for larger districts because we're much more like districts in the lower 48 in most urban areas. So those kinds of things would, would much more apply to us, but probably not at Igigek or Fognek.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? In no hands. Thank you, Dr. Brian and team. Um, was that our, the only business the administration had for us under this discussion item?
Yes.
Good, great. Um, with that said, that is the, um, last agenda item before we, um, adjourn. Uh, so would, um, accept a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts. So moved. Made by member Holman, seconded by member Higgins. Not seeing any objection. We are adjourned to executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Recording.